I think we want to keep them up any more than we have to. It being 7:02 in the Pacific Northwest, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. The first item on the agenda is citizen comment. Any citizen wishing to render comment can do so, except that there are none seen here in the council chambers, so we've therefore satisfied this element of the agenda. Next item on the agenda is approval of the November 1, 2016 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any amendments or proposals to amend, revise the meeting minutes? One thing I saw, or didn't see in there was, there was some discussion of having a new category in the matrix for the proposals, and the discussion was about a category for regulatory burden. And the minutes otherwise discussed the other categories. And it was raised by Commissioner Olson, and I concurred with Commissioner Olson's proposal, so I'd like to revise the minutes to include that discussion, or reference to it. Do I hear a second? Okay. All in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition, say nay. Any abstentions, declare that. There being none, the motion carries, the minutes are approved as amended. Next item on the agenda is a lot of documents, but I think it's under the scope of affordable housing, so I invite to the presentation table city staff and consultants.
Good to be back. So, I don't have a lot to say, being as I haven't been here at the last couple of meetings, but from going back and reading the minutes and reading the materials, it looks like you're making good progress on filling in the housing matrix. And so, the task before you tonight, I think, is clearly outlined in the memo. So, I don't have anything further to say, other than hopefully we'll be able to at least get through that far with the process this evening. So, I'm going to turn it over to Arthur and Mike to continue this discussion.
Davy, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, it looks like we budgeted one more meeting to discuss this topic?
Yes.
And then we expect to have something we can present to the council?
Right. So, presenting it to council will probably be in January. So, what we're trying to do is at least wrap up the planning commission's component this year.
We've got a late start on this topic because of the wireless communications element.
Right.
Right. We only started on this, I think, in August?
Yeah.
I think we presented wireless in July. I know that Arthur was at a meeting prior to that, so we got a little bit of a start earlier, and then we delayed it, and then we started again. My point is, I'm kind of skeptical that we can really do justice to the merits of the final proposals in one meeting, given that it's taken us this long to get it narrowed down to what are perhaps 10. And is there urgency to getting this to the council in just one more meeting?
The goal was to do that, and here's why. Because the council then also has to review the funding strategy piece, the direct funding assistance, to be able to roll that into the strategy to complete it. And we were hoping to have the housing strategy completed early in January, so that if there were any work programs to be assigned to the docket, they could be done, which needs to be done in late January, early February. So, that was the goal, is so that we would be prepared to have docket items from the priorities.
Any other concern to this end, on the commission?
I don't have a concern, but I think last meeting, we really did do a comprehensive what are our top 10 items, and that's what we can review tonight, is just to see, you know, what that package looks like. I think, from the onset, we knew we weren't going to be able to go deep into detail on every single area. Our goal was to present to council the highest priority from the research that we did do, unless there's some additional information that Arthur and Arch will be bringing to us.
Any else?
Yeah, I think as long as we're focused on, I think we were supposed to come up with three top priorities. I believe that was on the staff memo.
Correct.
That may take a little time. I would hope we could make good progress on it tonight, so I guess I'm maybe a little more optimistic that we can accomplish that.
Go ahead, Arthur, unless there's other comment. I don't see any.
Commissioner Olson?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to add that if we truly get locked out, then we just have to delay it, so we can see how it goes.
Right. Okay. Right. Okay. Go ahead.
So, what we, yeah, we tried to create several different products for you in this packet, to sort of help you walk through what we think are the next steps in this overall process. So, the three documents that are in your packet, the first is the matrix that we put together, staff put together, based on the tallies from your voting. And we'll come back, and that'll be the first thing we covered. I just wanted to quickly cover the three materials that are in there. The second is, we did a matrix, or more like a table, that talked about monitoring activities. So, these were all the watch items, and we said at the last meeting, we thought we had an idea on how to organize those items, because they seemed to fall in a couple of different categories. So, we're hoping there'll be time tonight to look at that document as well, and see if you have questions about that, or if this organization of those items makes sense. And then, third, we said we also would be working on having like a cover part of to the matrix, and so we've attempted to start drafting something that covers the topic areas that we think would be helpful in there. And so, the third thing we'd love to do tonight, if we have time, is to look at that and see if this looks like the right kind of information to have in this, if there's things that aren't in there generally, or specific that you'd like to also see addressed, then we can talk about that kind of thing. So, those are the three basic components of tonight, with the first, the most significant being the first part. So, I just wanted to make sure that you understood these are the different things that we were potentially looking at covering tonight. Okay? So, with that, turning to the matrix is probably the first thing to do. And I think what we did is, what we basically did is just pulled out those items that got a tally from the commissioners in their voting. So, we're not proposing at this time that the other things disappear. We're thinking the final product will still be the full matrix, and the ones that aren't on here either become the watch items and/or the lower priority items. We thought the purpose of tonight would be to focus on high and medium, and then amongst the high are the, about three that we, that you think are particularly timely and/or important. So, this chart is organized, very simply, by those that received a mark by four or more commissioners. We put into the high grouping. The ones that got, and you can see there are seven items that fell into that category. There were five that received threes, and we thought we wanted to call those out, because that just sort of seemed to be sort of like, yeah, maybe, maybe not, you know, but we wanted to at least let you see that. And then there were about seven, or about eight, or nine, that were, that got two or fewer votes. They all got at least one, but these are the ones that got two or fewer. So, that sort of gave us a first cut at high and medium, and so I think what we want, I think we had two or three questions related to the matrix to turn over to you. One is, are there any in the high and medium that don't feel like, or you have questions about them being high or medium, in other words, from looking at them? Then, we really wanted to just have high and medium, and we thought it might be good to sort of have a conscious discussion about, should the items that are under three go into, should any of those go into high, or should they all stay as mediums? So, were any of those worthy of moving up to the high category? And then, the other thing we would point out in the matrix, I think we mentioned to you, is we used more shading. So, the darker the shading, the more we think it's consistent with the criteria categories that we had. We didn't, we kept the same categories from before, but we used a darker shading if it meant for that category, it looked, for that criteria, that that strategy was more consistent with those different criteria. So, that's the background, and so we turn over to you with those two particular questions. I don't, I think normally I would first ask, do the highs and mediums feel right? Or if you have questions or comments about any of those, and then go to the threes and see if, moving which direction they should move the threes.
Excuse me, any comment? With the memo saying that we're trying to pare this down to three, two or three, given that there's no objection to this ranking, would it be helpful for us to then focus on our top three?
We can do that. First, I would say, how about the threes? Right now, I'd like to move the threes into high or medium, which are in the top of the second page of the matrix.
Well, let me ask this. You've got seven highs, and how many mediums?
Eight, nine. Wait, one, two, three, four, five, nine mediums.
And what do the threes mean? They're in between, or they're low?
They got three votes.
Which means?
So, they were kind of like right on the border.
Of?
Being either higher, they weren't, you know, where do you draw?
Between medium and high.
Exactly.
Okay.
They were the ones that got the middle score. So, we thought we would consciously let you know those, and rather than staff make the judgment, I can give you an opinion on where the three should go, but we thought we would put that to you, and see if you had questions, or if you had questions to us, but we wanted, we thought that the fives that were in the three categories should probably move in one direction or the other.
Anybody want to opine on the threes?
Well, it does seem that there's a timeliness factor, and you said that the darker shading covered more of our criteria of weighting it. So, would that mean that, for instance, on the second page, where we are looking at the number threes, would that mean that B2 is a little bit more weighted, because it covers more of our criteria?
That definitely could be an interpretation of that one, so yes.
Okay, so that's what the council could discuss.
Exactly. You know, and you don't have to follow the shading per se, but yes, that, that's part of the reason we wanted to use shading. It makes it a little bit easier to sort of make some of those kinds, if you want to use that approach, that judgment.
Okay.
And a comment I would make on something like that is, you know, this is one of these, B2 in particular, isn't something that, is something that you have to go out and explicitly do, but it says, hey, we as a community get it, if someone's trying to apply, we're going to be conscious of it, and if we can help support it, we will. And so, there's no explicit workload with it, other than if there's a project that is trying to be generating this area, you would be supportive, you know, you'd get involved and potentially support that effort.
And the other question I have is, so as we weight these as high, you know, we maybe move the threes into the other two categories, are we then going to shuffle those high-level ones into the upper level, and then you'll restructure the matrix accordingly?
I think, I think when we-
Or will you just leave the matrix the way it is, but highlight what we thought were the, more of the priorities?
I was assuming that once you get to your, if there's anywhere from, once the eight to 10 or so highs, that would basically be where the matrix potentially would stop, but that cover memo is where we'd say, now, of the highs, these are the three that we really, really want to emphasize to you, council, for the following reasons.
Okay.
And we could do it that way. That's how, you know, that's how we would vision it in our mind.
Okay. That will help frame our discussion, then.
Further comment? Any proposals for moving the threes? Vice Chair?
I did agree that B2 was the one that stood out to me as meriting a higher score with the timeliness. It got, it got, you know, more shaded interpretations. It also addresses the, you know, very low and low income sector, which I think is important to keep in mind. So, that would be the one that stood out to me as going from medium, or excuse me, from three to the high category.
Any response?
Could you repeat which one, Commissioner Orsula?
That was B2.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mike.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
I'm also wondering if we should put C as well in the high category, because we have that timeliness factor.
Which, there's two Cs, right?
C1 or C4?
Right.
Well, I was assuming, the C moved as a group. I'm not sure I-
There's two C boxes. One of them, when you, that's what we're asking. So, I'm guessing you might mean C4, because you said the timeliness.
Yes, that was what I was thinking.
Right, okay.
I suspect Commissioner Olson's feeling during C4.
Any other comment? Two votes for B2, two votes for C4. Well, is C4 just us getting money from the federal government, more or less, or, and the state?
It is, right. It's going to the state and federal level. It could be funding, that's the one we shaded, because that'll be a kind of, well, no, that's actually, yeah, so it's funding from them, or funding to give, or legislation to give cities tools, or other forms of legislation that impacts local efforts. So, it can be, that's one of the things, and that's a primary one, but sometimes it's also to give more tools to cities for different kinds, for different types of issues.
Yeah, I mean, if we can get some money from outside sources, it's got to be good, right?
Right.
Well, if you look at C4, it's got a series of subcategories, and some of these, I think, might be counterproductive. We've talked about some of them. C4E, state legislation for tenant protections, portability of tenant screening reports, just cause eviction, notice of rent increase, relocation assistance. Those are programs that are implemented in Seattle.
Hmm.
They're not widely adopted elsewhere, and they have, the landlord sector, I think, is very opposed to a lot of those, because it takes choice away from those landlords, and might reduce investment in this city for more housing.
Why do we have so many things, items in that one? Why, that should be broken out.
So, what I was going to suggest on, there's two of these where we were going to ask you, are there particular sub-items that you would want to call out, or either as really like, or let's, if you took that off the list, I'd feel better about it, kind of thing. So, we would, that was about to come out of my mouth before you jumped, before your question came in, that you need to sort through these that have subcategories, unless you think they're all the same.
I don't, and in fact, we talked about a number of these sub-issues. In fact, the condominium warranty provision laws, there's, it's a very difficult, sophisticated, complex issue. I'm not sure where the city's position would be helpful or hurtful to affordable housing, versus the legal protections of condominium owners who find construction defects-
Right.
-on their property.
Right.
So, I'm not sure how much good it does.
So-
Go ahead.
So, the, but again, as we said in the beginning-
Yeah.
-the question is, if it's timely, should you look at it to see if the city wants to take a position? So, we're not necessarily on all of these saying, do these mean you're going to support all these? It's meaning that you could say on some of them, well, we already know where we're at on this one, but it could be saying, we should look at these legislation, and here are ideas you could look at, you may not support, decide to support all of them, but looking at legislation and the city weighing in at particular areas, is that a high priority?
So, one of my concerns is that a lot of these are worded so vaguely and broadly that it's hard to know what it really means. And I think we put that in front of the city council with all the other proposals, that in themselves require a lot of discussion and parsing of merits. I think it's only going to get more confusing. If you say, well, this is something we'll look at down the road, which they could do anyway. So, I'd be inclined to simplify things by taking those, some of this vague language with different interpretations out of the proposals.
I'm, to be honest, I'm not quite sure I'm following the comment.
Well, I'm trying to follow you when you're saying, let's take, for example, state legislation to address condominium issues.
Mm-hmm.
You're saying that doesn't mean we have a position, it means we're going to suggest that they look at this if it comes before the state, and then make a position, take a position?
So, I would-
Oh, I'm sorry. I think what we're really trying to decide is not to eliminate that particular item, but rather decide, should we pop it up into the high category, or lower it to the medium category? That's all we're really doing right now. We're, it's not, it's going to stay on the matrix, but what we're trying to decide is, do we want to move that to a higher priority for the council to look at, or do we want to demote it, in a way, to the medium category?
And something we could do is, we could drop all the A through F. Those were to give you examples of things that we know are out there, that we've heard about, that cities have been, through the Sound Cities Association, et cetera, have been looking at, that we've heard of, and that are on different bodies legislative agendas. So, this is, and if you want, just pull them out and just leave the general statement, and then when you get to the topic, then you can go into the detail of what things the city wants to, you know, as they look at legislative agenda, which things are appropriate.
Right.
Maybe that's a way to get at your point, Commissioner Nugent.
Well, yeah, I just don't think that, you know, we, I know a little bit about this warranty stuff, and it's, it's a boondoggle for us to even consider getting into that morass. I mean, it would be just a huge mistake, so, and I think we should stay out of legislation at the, for those type of issues, and I agree that this other legislation on tenant protections, and we've got the landlord tenant law, which is a very good law, it's a very even law, and I just think we, I would bring it up if it was going to get more money from outside sources, that's great. But with those other two things in there, I'm saying I'd put it at the bottom of the list.
So, I guess I'm going to suggest we drop the A through F, and just take the general statement.
I would agree with that, except I agree with Scott, and I would strike, because of what Scott said, the words "federal legislation" from C4. And then we're left with, work with other cities to support county, state, and federal funding that support local housing efforts.
Well, the council has in the past supported legislation related to housing other than funding.
Right.
So, you have a history there. Suburban, Sound Cities Association came out with a legislative agenda this year. So, I think that the council has been willing to look at legislation other than funding. So, that's why I'm suggesting maybe you just keep it general at this point.
Well, as I said, it's so vague, you don't know what the legislation is, what good we're doing, and where it fits into our goals.
Right. But what we're saying is, that you would say that, is it a high priority, or a medium priority, for the city to look at legislative items out there, and see which items of those that are being pursued, they would want to support?
Right. And my problem is, with a lot of, just as with a lot of other of these proposals, that's one interpretation. Five people could look at that, this and say, well, no, that means we have to support, or we have now endorsed a policy of supporting legislation that, however they might interpret it, would have helped, would help affordable housing, tenant protections, condominium law changes, all these things could be conceived of, if we put that word in there as-
Right.
-our endorsement for support there.
So, I think that's where the cover memo that goes with this becomes important, because the cover memo, we try to put language in there saying, none of these are saying cities taking a specific position on them, but rather that they will research them, and will go into the detail when they take that item on in more detail. And so, that's why, one reason we were suggesting the cover memo, to address the kind of comment you've been making, where, so that that kind of interpretation is not made.
Carol?
And I think if we, if, I'll just make a motion, you know, we can, we can monkey around with this, but I make a motion that we include B2 and C4 as high priorities, and we demote the other items in the three category to the medium categories, so that we have a nice break between what our high priorities are, and what would remain on the matrix that would not necessarily be the focus. Then we will have a group of items that we can then really push up to the top, what we want the city to look at, at the first of the year. And then our cover memo can go through those high priority items and highlight why we picked what we picked. We haven't got there yet, but why we picked those items. And then on the ones that are in the medium category, we can still highlight the specifics of, say, C4 and the other items underneath, and explain why we don't view the city as needing to spend their time on those items as a high priority. Does that make sense?
I think it does, but I want to paraphrase your motion into something simpler for purposes of a vote, because I think you're making your motion and then a lot of reasons-
Yes.
-which I, we can get into after it's on the floor.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'll let you either pare it down, or I can try and simplify it.
I'll just simplify it this way. I'd like to make a motion that we elevate B2 and C4 to the high priority, and that the other items that were marked three would be demoted to the lower, medium category.
Excellent.
Clarification? Are you deleting the subtopics?
I'm not.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just saying, for now, let's elevate it, and then we can have a discussion why we don't want to do that. Maybe we just want to elevate one at this point.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I hear a second? Going once, going twice. Commissioner Mulcair, are you up to speed?
I am up to speed, and I wasn't prepared to second the motion, because I think we still have a meaningful conversation, not particularly we're discussing B2 and C4. And I have a question too about C4. I don't know that it-
Okay, I'm kind of hearing you. I think you're saying you're not prepared to make this a motion, but we can, if it's seconded, then discuss the merits. So, it doesn't mean there's a vote, it just means it's on the table.
I understand.
Okay. So, do I hear a second? Okay, I don't think there's a second, so the motion is off the table.
Okay.
Do I hear another motion?
Well, I would appreciate maybe just move one thing at a time, rather than complicate it.
Do you want to make a motion?
Good idea. You want to make a motion? Or should I?
I'm happy with-
No, go ahead.
Okay, let's back down and go, I'd like to make a motion to move B2 to the high category.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Motion on the table, discussion? This is housing developers getting capital from public sources, or it says, operating assistance of local affordable housing projects. That means, is that coming from the government?
More times than not, but sometimes they might be applying for foundations and private sources as well. So, it could be private as well. More times than not, it's public, but there's also private involved.
Yeah, I like that. That's good. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Mike, you want to chip in, or are you comfortable?
I'm comfortable.
Okay. That satisfying discussion. All in favor of this motion, say aye, and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. That's five. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Mike, did you vote yes?
Raise your hand.
I raised my hand.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I got to look more closely. I think we have unanimous support for that motion. No abstentions and no votes against, so the motion carries. All right. Any other motions?
I will move the, move C4 without the subcategories into high, because I don't know what the future's going to bring, but I don't want us to be saying that we shouldn't address it when there's something immediate in front of us.
Okay.
And if we don't have anything immediate in front of us, we don't have to deal with it.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner, Vice Chair?
I don't know if this is an amendment or not, but I was wondering if we might say, instead of work with other cities to support county, state, and federal legislation and funding, if we caveat that to say, to consider supporting county, state, and federal legislation, so it's clear, to your point, that we're not necessarily endorsing any- so it's clear, to your point, that we're not necessarily endorsing any specific piece of legislation or funding opportunity. It is a sort of more conditional and maybe more mealy-mouthed, but it does... Take away the thought that we're supporting something.
Any further discussion? Or do you want to move for an amendment?
I'd like to discuss for a moment. I agree with Commissioner Orangeall on putting some language around the word "support." I think it's a legitimate term, "support," it's not a blanket, a blanket support statement, because we have to use it with, certainly we have some feelings about different items that are worth versus others.
Okay.
The question that I have is the round very first part of that I had described, where it says, "work with other cities," and my question, Arthur, is, when you say, "work with other cities," would this be participating in existing groups or multiple city initiatives? In other words, would we be joining into kind of existing, going to city initiatives that are formalized, or is this, is this, that these opportunities for work with other cities arise and we support the work that they would be doing? I'm trying to figure out if this is something we'd be jumping into, or something we need to show some leadership on.
Right, so let me explain what your certain, existing condition is, related to your question, and then you can decide if you want to do any tweaking of language. You are a member of two, what I would call, formal organizations, which you are formerly a member of. One is ARCH, which is a partnership of 14, 15 cities in East King County and the county. And then you're also a part, you're a member of Sound Cities Association. And Sound Cities has now gone into the legislative agenda business as of this year. So you are part of two organizations that have, at different levels, looked at legislative issues over the years.
Could you just say with a second?
Sound Cities Association used to be, it's known as SCA, used to be Suburban Cities Association, so it's, but now Bellevue's a member, I think even, so most cities in King County are a member of that organization, and I don't know if by taking on the name "Sound Cities" that's meant it's growing to other counties too now. I'm not sure, but it's been King County cities throughout King County in the past.
And when we talk about participating with other groups, would that be something that is handled by city staff? Whether it is within our community or within our Kenmore City Government, would be participating in that?
It's across the board, depending, you know, sometimes the first time the work is done at the staff level, we have an executive board and our councils who, you know, we wouldn't do something without knowing that, where they're at. Sound Cities has also boards and commissions that are represented by council members. So it's, you know, and then sometimes if your legislation's being supported, sometimes it's letter from council, sometimes it's council members testifying, sometimes it's staff testifying. So it can be a little bit here, there, and everywhere. If you look at sort of the city, I think is a good example, is how engaged Kenmore got with Sound Trant at three. You did quite a wide range of different activities to engage upfront and then support when something was out on the ballot. And that's, and that's obviously a very, very large item, but that's an example of the range of things cities can have done.
Vice Chair?
So in terms of the legislative agenda, is that, tell me, that each city has at least some ability to sign on or not to a specific piece of legislation through Sound Cities Association? I'm not quite understanding how individual cities interact with this group in terms of their specific position on, you know, any...
So I can just give you examples from the past, and that might help explain. So, for example, the multifamily tax exemption program that you used across the street. That legislation only existed for cities of over 50,000, originally over 100,000, then it got moved to 50,000. The ARCH members looked at that, because some of them had that tool and some didn't. We all collectively, through the ARCH Executive Board, which is the executive level of the cities, talked about that and said, boy, why isn't this tool available to all of us? And so collectively, and that meant some of the cities using their individual, they put it on their own individual council agendas, we, the council sort of said, you also go and write something through your executive board. And so through communication back and forth to one another, and then many, some cities have, members of ARCH have lobbyists. So everybody is sort of talking to one another, trying to have a common message, so that hopefully the legislators see enough common interest, that that helps increase their willingness to pass legislation. When they see more bodies, all the cities speaking of the same voice, then that helps. And so there's usually an education process upfront, try to come up with an answer that everyone kind of concurs with, and then they all weigh in where they have ability to during the legislative process.
But in other words, it doesn't, I'm just trying to get to the point that it doesn't bind a city who's a member of this to support any specific piece of legislation.
That has not...
Okay, thank you, that's...
Anybody else? So here's my concern. Just the literal language of this implies that there's an endorsement with any housing proposal, county, state, federal, that would reduce the cost of housing for some kind of segment of society, you know, affordable housing. That's not a bad, but I think these issues are very complicated, and to read this literal language connotes that we are recommending, and that the council would be recommending, support for any, that kind of legislation. So we've got five examples, many of which we're uncomfortable with, but I think this would imply that we are saying, yes, adopt those kinds of positions, because it's very easy to say, they support local housing efforts, and that's the last phrase in this sentence. I'm fine with federal funding, supporting any kind of federal, state, local funding for local housing efforts, but to say that we're going to support or even consider supporting, and I think it's a very good potential compromise, but I still think it would imply we're endorsing whatever housing proposals are brought up at those levels of government. Now, that's, you know, I'm not here to prolong this, because I know we've got a long agenda here, but that's my...
Would you feel more comfortable if we included a description of what you're describing to the council, so that they would be warned of the potential conflict of interest of just blanket agreeing with all the ARCH proposals through the legislative process? Or even the Sound City proposal? I went to that Sound City Association dinner, and I mean, affordable housing is the topic of the day in the newspaper and on the news every day. So to not, I don't want to say, to not include it on the high priority would be, you know, avoiding something we're going to have to deal with anyway. But if you could include an explanation, and I'm not opposed to putting it on the medium category, but just for the sake of conversation, would that kind of ease your tension a little bit?
I, I wasn't sure if, in the beginning, I didn't hear if you said the impact of adding the word "consider" in your, if you were assuming that in your comments.
I did. I said, even if you put the word "consider," which I think is a very good effort to try and bridge the gap, and I took it very seriously. But the word "support" shows up again.
Yes, it does.
In this thing. So anybody who's a housing advocate, an affordable housing advocate, which is not a bad thing, but there's two sides or multiple sides to these issues. So the one who wants whatever it takes to reduce the cost of housing to any number of people is the one we're going to endorse. It's very easy to read that and say, then that's what we support, and that's what we're endorsing. So I know, I mean, it seems clear that we can all agree on we support funding. So the rest of it gets confusing. You know, here we are, spending 10 minutes, we've got a whole long list of things to consider, and we're still wrestling with this, and it seems to me that's making this thing too confusing. Go ahead, Scott.
Could you include the word "evaluate" or something before you consider supporting? So in other words, it's not a blanket, just because something comes up, you'll support it. So I think, and I don't think that would be the case. I think what you're trying to clarify is, just because something comes up in legislation, it doesn't commit you to support it or not. So I think what you're looking for is some way to clarify that in that section. If we could do that, or find a word or a sentence, would that address your concern?
And I think, I hear you. I hear you, Carol. I think you're making a really good effort to bridge this gap. I don't want to, and I'm not trying to make you struggle, I'm still not comfortable, because the word "support" is still in there, and no matter what we put in there, I think an advocate's going to say, well, look, the council, the commission endorsed it, council endorsed it. I'm not saying that's a fair interpretation, but I think it's going to result in that interpretation from a segment of advocates, legislators, policymakers who really want that conclusion. That's how I've seen things play out sometimes with policymakers.
I agree, I agree with the point you're making, but going back to the funding, aren't, is the city already trying to get as much funding for this type of stuff already, or is none of that going on on this arena of affordable?
I would say historically, the cities are increasingly directly engaging legislatures, both at the federal and state level, on this topic, which they had in the first 20 years I worked here.
Okay, so are we doing it now here at the city at Kenmore?
More, I think more, I can't speak for every city who's a member of ARCH. I know in general, there's been much more interest.
I mean, because if they're already doing it, I mean, we don't need to move it up, potentially.
Well, this, again, if you don't, you're, I mean, if that's what you're doing, then you should give it a high. If their council's already doing, you can, that's part of an argument, say, keep it high. If they've already, and that's the point I was trying to make earlier, is the council last year did include, on their legislative agenda, several of these, and some of them were like the shaded column. We want tools, which isn't funding from the state or the federal level, but was giving them tools to have to create a local source. So that's where I think, given your conversation, why I propose just eliminating all the subcategories, agree with your idea of adding the word "consider," because your council did already look at some of these other areas and did show interest in some of these other area issues in recent years.
And I do think that the Sound City Association members, that association, I would say, probably is more of a collaborative group, where they talk about their successes, so that other city staff and elected officials can overcome the obstacles, so they can move forward for the benefit of their citizens. So it doesn't mean that, just because we put it up on this agenda, that we're saying that the city has to do this. But I do like including the word "consider" instead of "support," because then it gives the elected officials that may or may not be there in five years, the same advantage that our current council has. They can consider it.
Okay. Dennis has been waiting patiently.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So I'm going to give him...
I'm wondering if we can better address your concern by striking "to support" and just put in "evaluating."
Yep. You know, I was just thinking more about what Debbie said, and I thought, you know what? If you put "evaluate," I think I'm okay with it. Because just to say "evaluate" something that supports, at least means you're considering those other sides. So I agree with you.
I agree with that. That's a good, good word.
Mark, go ahead.
Just one other thought, and maybe it's not necessary now, if Doug's fine with it, is instead of saying, where are we, work with other cities to evaluate county, state, and federal legislation, that addresses local housing efforts?
Yep.
Would that further make you feel more comfortable?
Because you don't know what support...
Right. I mean, support is a loaded word, so if we could make those...
Yes, I agree.
Dennis, good wordsmithing, I think, and...
Well, it was Dennis's motion. We could vote on the amendment, or it looks like we have agreement on it anyway.
Well, can I just withdraw?
Yeah.
The motion, and then I'll do another one that incorporates this.
Go ahead.
I move that we move category C4 to high, and it would read as, "work with other cities in evaluating county, state, and federal legislation." I forgot that.
And?
And?
No, there was another word.
Address.
And address, right. And funding.
That...
That address, local housing. Sorry.
Nope, you got it. Any second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Further discussion? Commissioner Mulcair?
No, I have it.
All right.
It's a three-word.
Okay, that satisfying discussion. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. All abstaining, please declare that. There being none, the motion carries. So C4, with those amendments and without the subcategories, now move to high. Do we hear any motions to move other proposals to the high category? Number three proposals to the high category? I actually like A1. A1F at the top. I think we discussed this. I thought it was creative. Provide a flexible development process for preserving environmentally constrained property that accommodates alternative building types. I think there was some talk about modifying setbacks, or modifying buffers, or things like Arthur, maybe you could elaborate on that. I thought...
I think you summarized it well.
Okay.
Given clear examples.
But here's my concern. Are we now then overstepping our environmental protection by doing that? Are we infringing on that?
It says preserve environmentally constrained properties. So I don't, I don't know. I mean, if you need a tweak there to, so that, I think the whole intent here is, so while you're protecting the environmentally constrained properties, are you still allowing development to occur by having a little flexibility in the rules a little bit? So I don't...
Yeah, it's pretty vague. But I thought, I remember we talked about, and I thought, well, this is really intriguing to me. There might be some properties out there that could be sources of affordable housing, but I can't remember where we struck the balance between, you know, you could say that about any property.
So...
You could say, oh, well, it's got a critical areas portion of it. Let's just get rid of that, so we can expand the footprint and put a bigger structure on there.
So can I put Debbie on the spot? Do you have something like a PUD process in place now, that sort of kind of allows that already?
Not specifically. We have a clustering requirement in the R1 zone that requires, you know, if there's environmental constraints...
But that's only for R1 zone, though?
But we don't really have a PUD that's broadly applicable.
Okay, all right. Some cities, I would have said, maybe one reason it's medium is you have a tool that might be an awkward tool, but you have something, but maybe that doesn't sound like the case here, necessarily.
Okay. I feel like we had kind of an answer back when, but maybe I misremembered.
I got a fat folder here, if you want.
What's that?
I can go through all my notes.
No, it's all right. We got a lot on the table already. I'm not going to struggle to find a few more, but I thought that might be something we could do. All right, any other?
My thought on that, that could be something for the future, you know, to consider, because it's, you know, if we run out of properties at that point, then we could...
Right, that's...
All right, so any other motions to move, elevate the number threes to the high category? Okay, hearing none? Right to the next step. What's our next step, Arthur?
The next step is you now have...
Oh, hold it, hold it. Commissioner Olson?
I don't think we demoted the others to medium.
Oh, right.
We just need to vote on that.
Okay, you want to move?
I moved the remaining threes be demoted to medium.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Oh, no, discussion. Do we have discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions, raise your hand, say abstention. None? Motion carries. Thank you, Dennis. Arthur?
Okay, so the next step, at least as how we outlined it, is to take, you now have 10 that are high.
Yeah, we had seven, we added two. I thought we added two.
Anywhere at nine?
One, two, three, four, five, six, I'm sorry, nine. Sorry, good, thank you. So the question is, if there's some you'd like to call out, and I think we were trying to keep it at three, because there's also the direct assistance that the council might pick, because normally we say three to five, but because there was still another chunk, we were sort of saying, are there up to three that you'd really like to call out? And if so, we'd really want to make sure we document reasons why, or that you'd like to call ones out. Now, one thought to help prime the thing is to do what we did last time.
Yep.
And give you three, you know, give you, each take a piece of paper, and write down three. And then see how that, take a quick break, and we'll tally them, and... three, and then see how that, take a quick break, and we'll tally them, and that'll start, that's me hell to it, but at least it's...
I think it's the most efficient way. Any objections to that, Dennis?
No, I'm just thinking you may want to do five or something. If you do three, then...
Okay, whatever number you want to choose, you guys get to pick.
I would do three, because we're going to get overlap anyway. We're going to get more than three if we still do three.
Well, I think he wanted, he was thinking if you, they'll have more voting that way. You'll have more counts to see if certain ones get there. But anyway, whichever, whatever number you're...
Before we do that, I mean, I'm a little uncertain about what some of these items, what they mean.
Okay.
And so, can I ask some questions on that, and then you answer them?
You may.
Sure.
The overlay zoning for senior housing, is that just expanding where senior housing can exist, like in, gets into residential areas? Is that what that means?
It, it, it's, I've seen an example where a city, some cities only apply it in certain zones. Some have done it in more zones, so that would be part of when you get into it more detail, like Bothell has done an overlay for only one part of the city. Bellevue took any zone that was zoned 20, R20, and above, you would be able to use a different way of calculating density. So in both of those cases, it didn't allow it everywhere. So that would be part of, who knows at this point? The point is, is that do you create some special rules for seeing, and it would take a lot more work looking into how you would do that, and if it would be limited to certain zones or not.
Okay, and then the next one, allow flexible reuse of tax-exempt or publicly owned sites.
Yes.
Okay, and I kind of get the parking ride thing. You put up a parking ride, and you say, okay, we've got a little area over here, we can put up an apartment here and pack them in. Is that kind of...
Yes, this was, this was the qualifying language we came up with from last meeting's discussion, and the tax exempt was trying to cover churches, because they're, so that was, because you, you realize it might be more than just public sites, and churches was the other one that you were comfortable with, so that's where that is meant to mean. But, and that would be what would potentially happen, yes.
Oh, that's that church idea. I think, I read something where that got crossed out on the churches. It was...
No, we, before we had it, it was like any large parcel, and the conversation was to narrow that down.
Oh, okay.
And that was, I thought, made the cut of what to narrow it down to.
Okay.
Could I interject something?
Well, let's get, let's get finished questions, unless that's relevant to the churches.
It's relative to his statement. That, that particular idea of using the tax-exempt parceling or pairing really has been a great strategy for the university district, which just recently rezoned and is allowing churches to take their parking lots, create parking, but then build housing on top of it. What it does is it creates a vehicle for the churches to then maintain their brick sanctuaries that are falling down because they don't have the money to refurbish them, but this gives them a new use for parts of their land that actually can generate a greater purpose for the city. So it's actually a really cool strategy.
Yeah, I, I think it is too. So, yeah, okay, I just, let's see if I got any more questions on... Oh, this is, on A3, it's kind of an interesting thing, because we do have some mobile home parks on the slough, and they're really kind of neat communities. I don't know if you've ever been down there, and it would be neat to see that be preserved without taking away the property rights of the owner, and I don't know if, is there a strategy that it's a win-win for both of them on that?
That's what the conversations will end up being if that's looked into. We've seen cases, some different approaches have been used, and that's part of the community conversation.
Gotcha. Okay, I think that's, that's probably about the, the questions I have.
Great. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I just had a real quick question, sort of following on Scott's point about A3, which I personally am very intrigued by. How are we defining affordable housing in this context? Existing affordable housing?
Oh.
I'm just kind of curious what, you know, if there is some metric, or...
So that's a great, that's a good clarification question to ask, and so I would actually, especially, and since we first looked at this, this is starting to get more and more attention. You know, we called out manufactured housing. You could really call out affordable housing in two different ways, and the second, the first example could work in either one. One is something that already has an explicit affordability requirement, which might be, might be expiring, because it's 20 years old and whatever their contract, and so are there ways to keep that unit that has explicit affordability, keep that over time? It was one of our top priorities our first 20 years, and we preserved a number of properties throughout East King County so that they didn't get converted to market rate. The other is relatively affordable market rate housing, that you'd like to find a way for it not to be redeveloped potentially, that you might consider worthy of keeping it if you can, and keeping its relative affordability. And that might mean someone buying it. The housing authority has bought properties off the open market over the years throughout East King County. I can't remember if they bought one in Kenmore. I know they bought one in Bothell, and they bought one that was like affordable, but it was in terrible condition, and so they fixed it up and they kept it relatively affordable. So there, those are two very different scenarios, but this tool that you see here could be something that could support either one of those. So whether or not you want to call out one or both of those scenarios in here, to be a little more clear, you only have so many of the first kind where there's existing contract, but you have some. It would, so this, where it might be worth calling out if your interest is in both of those situations worth looking at, and considering tools that would work for either of them.
All right. I think that makes sense, you know, as, maybe as examples. I guess we don't have to necessarily define affordable housing in terms of this exercise, right? We're recommending strategies that will be further looked at or not.
Right, but what might be worth calling out is both those that are explicitly affordable and those that are market, you know, relatively affordable in the market. Just to call out that it could cover, again, you're not dictating, but that you at least might want to look at both situations.
That sounds fine to me, but I defer to...
I have mixed feelings about continuing the affordable housing requirement on certain parcels, because it seems to me that somebody loses money in that. And, in other words, the land had a market value. You imposed this affordable housing requirement, the land was worth less, because whoever buys it, it's going to pay less for it. So, if that's a 20-year requirement...
Right.
Somebody got hit at the start when they imposed that law.
Trust me, right.
They said, oh, great, Mike.
And what I...
100,000 old properties now worth 400,000.
Just to, let me clarify before you go to any further with that thought.
Yeah, go ahead.
So that we don't confuse the situation.
Yeah.
It meant buying out those owners at their market value.
Oh, okay.
But we felt that was worth doing because we wanted to keep the subsidies in place, because if they walked away, the subsidies walked away.
Find them.
Right.
And can I make a suggestion? You know, I'm looking at this C2 on here, and, and I think we should just eliminate, drop it down to three or whatever, the, because I don't think, I mean, I'm, I'm intrigued of most of these, maybe even six of them, but that one, I don't think it really belongs here, because it's, there's resources for tenants facing eviction already exists, and foreclosure counseling, there's a big federal program on that right now, from what I understand, and I just, I just think that, you know, that's not, I don't know, I just don't like that on this list, on the, and...
Well, but we're just going to pare it down. So if you don't like it, and others don't like it, it won't make it.
So, I'm going to lobby people.
There you go, all right.
Don't vote for that one.
All right. Scott's on, right?
You get five minutes of lobbying, folks.
But we can get to, you know, even the ones that make it, we can fight over after the...
So, so could I, did you want us, for this conversation we just had now, add some language to clarify affordable housing has a couple different hats, potentially, just so that, you know, both...
No, because, I mean, I don't want to, I want to try and move to this next step, and we've already got strategies plural.
All right, that's fine. I'm not trying to break them apart.
I'm not saying you are, because I think you proposed some good examples. I will say that I'm now more kind of intrigued by what Dennis said, let's do five, because there might be something low on everybody's list that suddenly becomes a more.
Exactly.
And I think, yeah, that was the point you were making. You just give me a few minutes, and I might, I might come to something good. So if everybody's okay with that, you want to make a list of five?
Sure. Are we doing it in our order, or just five, the top five with that not ranked one to five?
Doesn't hurt to rank them, does it?
If you, if you're capable of ranking in your head, sure, we'll, we'll try to figure out a way to tally ones, twos, you know, if you have that clear in your head, we should probably try to, we'll, we'll put that down when we tally.
I prefer rank. Okay, Carol?
So, could we discuss how we do that?
Go ahead.
Pick five?
Yeah.
And then rank your top three. One, two, three.
Why don't we rank all five?
It's going to take some time to figure that out.
For each of us?
In my mind, I get, it's difficult for me.
Why don't you put two and three as a tie?
Two.
You can't distinguish. Put three as a tie on the, you know, you drink one, two, and then three is fourth, is three things.
That's true.
Our interest in them. I think you just list them.
Okay.
And then we'll be able to tell by looking.
How many votes each got?
Yeah.
Okay. And then how does Mike do this?
Mike will tell, while you're doing it, we'll talk to Mike. He'll give us, he'll quietly tell us his...
Is it a secret ballot? Because I don't want Mike to feel uncomfortable. He's, you know, he's on the phone. All right, so it seems like we're all in agreement. We're going to list our five favorites of the high categories. We'll take, what do we need, five? Well, a few minutes, when I see people stop writing. We need paper, links, pieces of paper. Bridget?
Bridget's got some paper.
It's like a game show.
Okay, so this is kind of pre-lobbying lobbying, okay? But I want us to, when we're looking at these high-rated items that we're going to pick, to look at how it satisfies our criteria on the right side of the paper where the shading is, because really, that's what we want to do, is cover as many of those bases as we can. So the shading is going to weight it a little bit. Now, that doesn't mean you have to pick it. I'm just pointing out, I'm lobbying for you to look at that.
I think that's a good idea, but as long as we're lobbying.
Yes.
I also want to say, Dennis brought up a good point at the last meeting, that we mentioned also should be put in the minutes, and that is regulatory burden. And Arthur had said, well, let's keep it in mind, you know, even if it's not a category. I'd rather call it market efficiency. You know, how efficiently can the private sector produce these products, the housing that's affordable? Because then it gets a positive score, and everything else on here gets a positive score. So I'd suggest that we also look at that.
Okay.
Okay? Now with that, Mark?
Yeah.
All right. We go to the voting.
The buzzer's off. Start.
Start.
Uh.
So whenever you're ready, we'll get your talent. So you heard that the top five individual recommendations were applied?
Um, not necessarily, there's.
Doing it Swedish.
Oh.
I'm sure it's.
Somebody still waiting on it? Not yet, all right, okay, so you guys can turn.
Hold on. Yeah, we, we have, yeah, all right.
No. We're inviting you.
You're kind of kind of small.
They're, they're kind of.
Votes.
So, okay, so now, some of you are waiting, right? Did any of you wait, or did, or not? Did any of you feel like you were doing them in an order?
I, I waited.
Okay, anybody else?
I didn't wait long.
Right, I, I, okay.
I did.
Okay, yeah, so some of you, that was sort of clear, that one or two, it looked like several of you were, you were able to rate them in your head. Okay, so, I'm going to try to account for both totals, and waiting less so, but I'll at least give you a sense. So, two got, no, nobody got six, no, no one item got all six people voting for them. A three, both B and C, um, received five. And of those, boy, you know, if, if there was waiting, or they, they look like they're really close. Right, but I'm just letting, hm?
You just gotta make it count.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to let you know, I'm respecting the fact that some of you tried to do. That's right. So, um, what I'm saying is, it isn't like one of them had all ones, and then one of them, they, they were all, a mixture of, of where they landed on people's radar. Though ADUs might have gotten more low number, you know, higher rankings. So ADUs, I might say, was slightly ahead, um, kinda thing. Then there were three that had four votes, and those were A, A one A, um, and A one B, and then also A three.
A three A.
A three A, sorry, A three A. Okay, and there, um, it looks like the A ones did slightly better, but all three of those had, their numbers are all relatively high prioritized, from those, if, from looking at numbers. And then, just to complete the tally, um, but we're only looking for the top three, but just so you know, that there were, it's interesting, both C three and B two A, the applications ones, both got three votes, but they're also lower numbers for everybody who they vote for them. And then, um, a couple of people voted for C two, and again, lower numbers generally. Okay? So it looks like basically the top two sections are the ones that consistently got the most votes, with A three B and A three C, from an absolute number point of view, getting the most. And the other three tied.
So, I mean, Dennis, the most efficient thing is to look at the top third, and choose one of those tied proposals?
If, I guess the first thing I would say is, if you did it on a pure tally, do people feel good about A three, B and C being in the top three?
Yes, is that all three to A three's?
B and C.
No, A three B and A three C, are you comfortable, because those are the ones that get five votes, of having those being the top three?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Okay, all right. Now you have to pick between the other three, and, um, now you need to pick between the other three, and this is where, especially looking at income sur, no, I'm not, they, they all have, they all at least get to moderate level. And so I would say, I'm, I think they all at least, they're not just market driven ones, so I think, you know, one of them does have expanding the density bonuses, potentially gets to low income, but that's, that's, you know, it's a more directly related to affordability than the first two. But I'm only making that observation. So.
So anybody wanna lobby? I think that's where we're at.
What are, what are your choice, okay, A one A, A one B and A three A?
Right.
Okay. Top three.
Well, I, I kinda lobby for A one B, because it's a unique idea, and I don't know the, the prospect of pulling some of that off, but it would be, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes.
I will lobby for A one A, the, um, the senior, I think we also say we could link it to some affordable housing to, to, I think, serve different income levels, right? Or at least we had this sort of conceptual discussion about that. Um, and it does kind of specifically address the senior population in ways that the other, the first two don't quite get to, and I think that they're a particularly vulnerable, you know, segment of the population. I know they're not, you know, a majority, but, um, that would be my, my third choice.
And on that level, uh, on the zoning, I mean, do we have, I mean, didn't the planners make that in consideration when they did the zoning in this city? Or has that been part of the equation, senior housing, already?
Not spec, not specifically calling out senior housing, no, it's not been specifically called out.
Yeah, well, we did rezone with the five hundred and two quarter, so, well, one was around, and. Yeah, it was right after that. You could've just talked about.
We are very fortunate in that we already have state senior housing, but not in every category that senior housing for those is trending towards.
My point was that zoning typically has a, a use, density of commercial, residential, manufacturing, retail, that kind of thing. I don't think we have enough, uh, provinces. Renew or kind of rare, probably.
So, so you made a comment, because like I say, we, we don't know if we're gonna get this done, done tonight, and part of this might be, hey, there might be a question or two that might help you, and you just said something in a way that made me go, hm, I'm not, is there a piece of, you do have some senior housing in this community? And it might be, maybe you'd be curious to know, do you have more or less rep for a city of your size, you know, if we did it per capita? How many senior designated, you know, properties have been created in your community for seniors explicitly? What kinds are they? Okay? And then compare that for, you know, look at that total and compare that to other cities, and say, per capita, are you seeing more or less senior housing? And if the market's kind of finding ways to do it, just with the land used the way it is, does that mean it needs to be your very highest thing? You know, one of your top three?
That would be great, could you provide that information?
I think we have stuff on certain types of senior housing.
Right, I forgot to print that book today.
Right, but yes, we, we do, but I, I'm saying, even if we had it with us, it's almost, because you're trying to get to your top three, I'd actually like to, you know, because that would help justify what you're doing, um, to actually put together a little table for you, where we actually, because there's three different kinds of senior housing that we wanna look for and see what you have. And then if any of your manufactured housing is for over certain age limits, that might wanna be included in that list as well, because then you might know if it's jeopardized or not.
So I wanna, I wanna jump in with my preference, and compare A three A, which is my preference, to A one A. Which I'm less excited about, for a couple of reasons. Market efficiency, I think A three A is probably the most market efficient of all the properties. It would cost the city virtually nothing, because the private sector would be incentivized to already produce those products, if the city could use their, those density bonuses and transfers. And if, if Arthur could elaborate on how those work, my, my understanding was that properties that couldn't be developed, that transfer, uh, like properties that could be developed that aren't, and transfer their building rights between each other, right?
That's, that's what, yes.
So how does that work in practice?
Well, I can do, it's most commonly used for open space preservation. So, and Redmond has a program, where they're trying to protect part of the, parts of the valley, just north of downtown. So those landowners, if a builder in, in the downtown, they're limited to like four stories. If they wanna go to that fifth story, they have to go buy some TDRs. So they go out to a landowner, and that landowner will sell them their rights. And that way, the landowners recruit some value for their property that cannot be developed, or they're trying to preserve, and then that gets transferred to a builder who gets to build more in downtown.
Right, I really like that for a couple of reasons. One, if you ever got hit with environmental protection laws, over zoning or critical area ordinance, and then lost a lot of value, that's a way to. It doesn't hurt to be marked, but the purpose of that critical area restriction is still protected. If they get value, if they didn't necessarily deserve it. You know, if you own this property, and say it hits you with the zoning limitation, it's kind of really out of luck, and that can be a lot of money.
And so the wrinkle.
If you owned this property for decades, and found it's not turning with it, selling it, it sucks.
Right, so.
Not, it's always bad to do that, but that's a real downside, that they can mitigate.
Now, that wouldn't be the way you would use it here, per se. The way you'd use it here is, maybe you have a building that is like a garden style apartment in an area that you would allow more, and you say, well, okay, instead of you redeveloping it more, if you keep that building there, we'll let you sell those two, that twenty units breaker you're not using to somebody else, so it's the same concept, but you would apply it to housing you're trying to preserve. So maybe you use that for the manufactured housing area.
Isn't that what the preservation one is A three B, and how do you do it?
That's, but what I'm saying is, the idea of density transfer.
Yes.
That's where that concept may come into play.
It's the same, because it extends the market and trading value, which is, which we all agree is a really good market efficient way to create more wealth. So, my problem with A one A is a couple of things. One, to the extent you set aside a good advantage to one demographic sector, you reduce the amount of land available to fair market bidding and housing production. So if the market says, we want X kind of housing, condos, micro housing, whatever, and they're at a disadvantage because of the senior housing overlay, then there's that much less land for them to do it, which drives up the price of what they wanna do, because the land value is what drives up the price of housing. That's why Seattle and the surrounding area got a lot more expensive, it's the land that's expensive, because it's near the jobs. So, that is a market inefficient way to do something. My other problem is, I know seniors are vulnerable in a lot of ways, but I think we've seen data that says they are no more, in fact, they are less represented in the low income housing cost burden segment of Kenwood than other demographics. My third reason is, when we started this, it's, I know the council wants to make an emphasis, put an emphasis on senior housing, but I don't quite share that, which isn't, doesn't mean I'm gonna ignore it, because it's our job to do what we want, but any form of work with housing, it's been helped seniors, nonetheless, than other demographics. My reason for not breaking out our ant analysis toward the market is that hardship is large, no matter what demographic you belong to. You're a single, unemployed, whatever, man, woman, child, or something, there's likely really turning around, and we're burdened by unaffordable housing, no matter how old you are, no matter the, you know, other demographic you belong to, so, all of these things, we've said. So, that's my problem, favorite one demographic, whatever you have. So I, I'd lobby for A three A, because it's efficiency relative to A one.
And I'd like to lobby for A one B, because I think that actually gives us a, a more creative solution. It, it mimics what A three A is attempting to do, but it expands it to looking at the park and ride as a potential project, and from a timeliness standpoint, it covers more of our priorities than A three A does.
Is that right, Arthur? Does A three B, is that what you're lobbying for?
A one B is what I'm lobbying for. You're, you're lobbying for A three A.
Yeah, that's right.
So, they're, they're similar, but they're different, but I think the A one B is, has a little bit more potential, because we have a ST three that went through, and we also have the county that's open to those projects. Now, doesn't mean we have the money to do it, we'd have to come up with funding, but to me, it's a more creative solution, because it can cover all of those income levels that affordable housing is trying to target for our city, but it also wraps the transportation abilities. And I think we're really gonna find that the trending in senior housing is moving away from the traditional model of what Bothell did in grouping all of the senior housing in one section of the city. I think that trend is over. I think seniors are, especially baby boomer seniors, they're not gonna go live in those places, I'm sorry. They wanna stay young and active as long as they can, and they're gonna, if they need help, they're probably gonna bring it in to their home. So that is a senior trend that's going, but if you look at A one B, we really are able to, in a timely, uh, it's not already addressed, I mean, we're just hitting more of the opportunities.
Could, I, seeing, I'm, I'm trying to hear your comments, and have sort of a, a thought to throw out related to A one B and A three A. A three A is where you create something, some rules, and as the market produces its regular housing, you may get some incentives to get some affordability, probably, and I know it's as low and moderate, but it's probably more likely the moderate range typically. A one B is where you're looking at specific parcels and saying, aha, can we do something with those? And when you have that opportunity, you have the opportunity to bring in some, you mentioned, when you mentioned the subsidy dollars, cities of use surplus land, or park and rides, to bring in a lot of tools and hit, and, and pick developers who are gonna do something really different. And so it's sort of, you're manipulating the market more to get to a broader range of needs, where, you know, and, and you're consciously working it. Whereas with A three A, you're saying, hey, through the market, and they both have value, I mean.
They do.
They both have value, but that's a difference to think about, and so I'm, I'm, just put that out there for your thinking. And it's almost like we have the cells shaded wrong in the income search for those two, it's almost more like A one B does give you the opportunity to get to very low income, because if you are controlling who you pick, you pick someone who's going to go after subsidy sources, consciously do that, or you can choose to do that, and so you have greater potential to get to lower incomes with A one B. It's not a guarantee, but you have opportunities, because usually with a public landowner, you're having someone who's willing to be a little more picky on who they select to develop. So I just point out sort of the differences, and both of them, we do, we do a lot of both in different cities, so I'm not trying to, I don't know which one I'm arguing more for, but there is a uniqueness, a little bit more uniqueness to A one B, um, that's out there, and I don't know what the conversation's been about the park and ride, but, um, those kind of things, cities are asking themselves about right now.
Is there anybody else doing, uh, park and ride apartments right on top of the parking?
We've, Redmond has, Redmond's done one, um, way back, we did one in Kirkland, in South Kirkland, a couple of years ago. And, and both of those, we, developers were picked who went after like tacizem bond financing and other funding sources. So like, the, the park and ride in South Kirkland, it has a private piece, that's market rate, and then it has an affordable piece that has housing at thirty percent and fifty percent of median. So they act, it's a big enough parcel, they were able to do, they split it into two different phases, and, and stuff. And then, right next to a park and ride in Iskwa Highland, it was some publicly controlled land. land, so it's right next to the park and ride. And that's all of, that's the YWCA, and that goes from 60% of median down to 30% of median. And they use, they leveraged the site control to then get other public subsidy sources. So those are examples. And then right now, like in Redmond, that's a little bit different, it's privately owned, but we're looking at trying to buy one piece of it and control it so we can bring another dollar. So, yes, and Kirkland's trying to, Kirkland liked what they did so much on their first park and ride, they're trying to do another one. So they, they-
Can you get state and federal dollars on that?
What you're usually attracting there is, yes, we are getting state and federal dollars to, that, you know, the, the Arch Trust Fund, which has city dollars are in the projects, but there are county dollars, state dollars, federal dollars are all in those projects. And you pick a developer who says, I want to try to get those for you. And so we've done that.
So then, although I like what Doug says, but the, you know, doing it now, I think favors A, I got A one B, I think, because isn't the time for this park and ride to be improved?
Um, I think it's out there and just along those lines, when I walked in the door in Bellevue 25 years ago, the city went through that exercise, and they had said, here are the opportunities. Now, one of them, we did 10 years later, but we always knew it was there. So, you know, this could, A one B could be the exercise of understanding what you have and starting to be aware of it. And some of them you might not act on for five years because it's not timely, but you've identified it's something you want to do when time is right. And so from that point of view, looking at the properties in the city to see if any fit here that you'd like to try to line up, you're done and then you, you know, you, and it's there and you know, versus it's, like you say, if they start planning it and you're not thinking about it, you've lost the opportunity.
So is now the time to do it?
That's, that's what your comments are sort of-
That's what my comment is reflecting. I believe that in the next several years, if we don't take the opportunity to explore it, we'll miss that opportunity because the dollars will go elsewhere. But I think that there's a public awareness of need, and there's also the location of what we have available in the city is also there. So there's an ability to be creative at this particular time. Before we move forward with some of the other projects that will come online, because we're a few years out on Lake Point, we're a few years out, maybe eventually, you know, the lumber piece of property will become available, but we don't know. But we do know that there are some parcels that are coming up, and it might be helpful for the city to prioritize that at this time. Doesn't mean they'll do them, but they could do, it's a, that's what I'm lobbying for.
Okay. Jump in. Uh, who owns that park and ride? King County?
King County.
Um, there's two or three potential different kinds. I, I, I'm pretty sure it's King County.
So we could have that too. One of the three projects for 522 is park. Why would they look outside that park and ride to build more park and, other words, structure park? Is that what's going to get more people on DRT?
So, okay, you just set me up to tell you those two stories, okay? Did I get it, your comment? The first, the first is, we looked at one of the light rail stations in Bellevue, and they were talking about building, they, they want a park and ride, and they wanted to just do a surface park and ride. And we said, what if we took that piece of land and we gave you a structured park and ride, and then we gave you three or 400 housing, or however many housing units to? And we looked at the amount of transit generated, and the housing generated more transit ridership than the park and ride. So what we're saying is, what we've learned is that housing generates ridership just as much as park and rides can generate. So from that point of, now, today, I was just talking to the person from South, from King County Metro who is behind getting the housing done on the park and ride in South Kirkland. And he called me today about something else, and he said, he said, he mentioned Kirkland, and he said, we want, we think having housing on these park and rides is the way to go. In fact, when the South Kirkland park and ride was done, they expanded the parking capacity for the park and ride by 500 spaces as well as adding the housing. So they did both.
Okay. How high can you go? Because if you need to build a parking garage in a spot that you already own-
Right.
-to satisfy the ST three goal of more parking-
Right.
-along 522, are you planning, you're saying, they can do both?
Pretend, that's what-
A five-story parking garage and then another five stories on top of that?
Well, what we, again, what they did on the South Kirkland park and ride is they ended up doing, we thought we were going to do a big subterranean parking garage, and in the end, right, right, exactly. So in the end, they put in above grade parking garage to expand the park and ride, and then the housing has a one level subterranean parking garage just for its units. So-
Is the housing on top or next to it?
Next to, they took a corner of the park and ride and they went that approach. But the, the metro was open to either way.
Why would they build up if they've got all these spaces on the ground? In other words, it's a lot cheaper, every story you add, so why would they give up some of that for housing?
Because the ridership, they believe in the mission of having sustainability. They're, I'm just letting you know, I got called today by the person who did that and said, we want, we want that as a model going forward. The point being here is, maybe you don't do it. The coin is, is it timely enough that it should be on the radar? Now, I'm hearing the timeliness comment, and, you know, well, what if you did have a big parcel that the city was being asked to look at for zoning and stuff? Would you, would that make that timely? Where A three A is relevant, right? And it, it, it feels like A one B and A three A both have this, if there's a timeliness to them, don't lose the timeliness is sort of the message I'm hearing from your, your comments. And we may not fully know, other people might know better than we know about which is, if there's a timeliness element that would drive ranking one of those two higher than the other.
Could we make them equal and in our memo, talk about why we would like the council to consider those two? Because we're not really, we haven't really, I guess we did wait the other two that we selected, but it would be a way to draw attention to the council to consider both of those.
Well, you know, it's interesting because right behind that park and ride is a, is a mobile home park that is not very nice.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I mean, and it's affordable housing. I bet you the owner of that property would love to get traded credits from, to the, to the nice, uh, mobile home park on the slough, so you could, you know, do what Doug's wants to do, and you could do it with the, with the, uh, the parking lot and have more housing next to the parking lot. I mean, they could, they could go hand in hand, really.
Well, that's what I was thinking. ST three provides a multi-family density next to it and the transit order anyway.
Right.
Kill it, just to try and prove that you can do it with a park and ride.
Well, I think both of them, are, are both of those already in your town center?
We have a T O V.
In your overlay zone?
Um-
But we don't have density transit.
We don't, yeah, we don't have that.
And we don't have part of the T O V, that's, it's a limited area, limited area, can be a density policy outside that, but this?
Well, that's why I'm asking, I think, the park and ride is in the middle of the overlay zone.
Yeah.
So you already have A, A three A is essentially, at least parts of it, not the, not the creative idea you were talking about. That's the preservation strategy, so that's covered under A three B.
Right.
So you already got that as a, as a super high. But the idea of overlay, I mean, so you have that in that immediate neighborhood, this A three A would be more ineffective, Lake Point, or if the, you know, somewhere else just outside the overlay zone, or somewhere else in the city was being looked at for some significant, like a development agreement or something along those lines, to do something different than straightforward.
That's what I, I was seeing, A three A is far, much far more breaching effect than A three B. How many, how many park and rides do you have?
True.
How many tranches do we got?
Yeah.
You know, I, I think there'd be much more density in affordable housing compared to A three A, if it was incentive, right, the second, the third quarter. The other thing is too, there's this assumption with this whole subject, because we've had a hot housing market for three or four years. I know I mentioned this in the other meeting. It won't end. It will end. At some point, we're going to get, get another recession.
Soon, soon as the interest rates-
I actually do think that it's going to come sooner than later. I'm thinking that last Tuesday night, okay?
Yes.
And that's, then you suddenly set aside parcels for special projects, and the market's not there, and the need's not there because the recession is the only thing that's sure to reduce housing prices, as we saw in 2008. In other words, we can have a lot of affordable housing policies. What they're likely to do, if job growth continues, is slow the rate of growth of housing, not reduce it, except for people who really went under subsidies or rent control or some other really aggressive housing policy. So we have that recession. I think it sort of means, now we want to attract more investment, but we've only made it harder to do it because we had this extra, we've taken land off the table that the market might otherwise want to develop. Or we don't have those density policies, and then we feel like, now nothing's happened. So my fear is, my fear is, we could do A three, A one B, and we end up never using them.
I-
How about just going four, let's put four in there?
We could put four in there, but are we, are we alluding what we give to the council?
Well, I think, right. I mean, to me, there is really strong arguments for A one B and A three A.
I agree. I don't dislike A three A.
And, and, and I would say, looking at what's come through the trust fund, we are increasingly seeing groups having such a hard time finding land.
Yeah.
Two of the last three or four projects that Imagine Housing has done, our most established East King County nonprofit housing developer, have been on church properties.
Yeah.
And in both cases, they needed to deal with the comp plan and the zoning. And then actually, and the third one that they did was on a park and ride. So three of their last four projects have been on properties that fall in the category of A one B. Because as land gets harder to do, this creative reuse of land, I mean, we're seeing, you know, across the street is a creative reuse of land. When it's publicly or church owned, you have a landowner who's more tended to be more open to getting some public benefit out of that as well, instead of just market forces. So that's what argues for A one B, is lining up the expectation and the openness to that approach. And then A three A is because the market's the primary builder, and if there's ways to work with them to get some affordability, that's a great thing too. So you have more experience with A three A because you have the overlay, so you've at least, you've got that ball rolling and it's out there. You can argue both of these. And that's why I put out there, the council may know of, or the city may, you know, know of something out there that say, well, with what I know, that's what's the tie, is the real tiebreaker.
Yeah.
I don't know, we got some brown swells before, so go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I just want to say, I, I agree with your arguments on, on the A one A. That's, let's, let's, I think that should be a high priority, but obviously not a top three, and I'm, I'm certainly fine with that. I did have a question, why on A three A, if I read this chart correctly, it doesn't really address or serve the senior population? Is there a particular reason why?
On which one?
Why, on, on A three A, you specifically leave out the seniors in terms of population served, and, you know, to Carol's point, I, I think they, she's right, they're-
Yeah, okay.
I'm, I'm just curious how you reached that conclusion, because I still think we need to address seniors, I think that's a high priority.
Well, you know-
What's your thought on, on that?
This isn't perfect, and I think it's probably because when we look at this more times than not, it's been regular housing, but there have been-
Is the one in Kirkland done? That deal done for the senior?
In Kirkland?
Yeah. The expansion.
No, it's not done.
So we've all, we've, it's been fewer, much, much fewer, but that doesn't mean it's zero. Where there's been senior market rate developments that have used, been developed in areas with overlay affordability provisions, and that's probably why we didn't fill it in, but I could stand corrected to say, if a senior building gets built in the overlay district and it wants to use more density, it will provide some type of affordability.
Well, that, how many seniors live in, you know, senior housing relative to other forms of housing? I may be getting a little off track here, but I, I'm just kind of curious how we're going to address, and maybe, so-
Right.
How are we going to address the, the senior population as, you know, as a whole, not just in senior housing?
Correct. And that's one reason for saying like ADUs. ADUs are known as a way to help seniors stay in their homes, right?
It's a really good option.
And that, you've got them checked there.
That's why.
Even if we're not going to do, A one A is the top three, 3.5, whatever you land at, I still want that table because I think it provides, the council did care, and I think it's a nice table for us to have. And what it will show you is that there's no way the senior housing is housing all the seniors. You'll get a sense of what percentage of seniors are in senior house, and quote, senior housing, because we do know how many seniors you have, and we'll know how many housing units of seniors you have. And, and that'll give you a sense, is it a third, is it a quarter, is it 10%? And so you're absolutely correct, many seniors never are in explicitly senior designated housing. It doesn't, so things like ADUs or just affordable rental housing, as you were saying, Commissioner Nugent, can serve seniors too.
And, and I think the other thing that's changing is, we also have a different, you know, financial vehicle that allows seniors to stay in their homes-
Right.
-with the reverse mortgage. So I'm not sure that just focusing on that demographic is what we really want to do, but I think it's okay to, to add it, like you have it broken out this way. But I, but I do think that, you know, we're kind of splitting hairs at this point, we still have to put forward an additional one or two priorities, but that's where that memo's going to come in real handy, because we'll be able to start having a dialogue that we explain ourselves, I guess, and give, it'll just give them a leg up. If they look at our work and say, well, no, we have this other idea, they'll do it, but, or if they get public comment, that dictates otherwise. I think, I think this is a very helpful discussion, but it, but, you know, they're all in the high category. We just have to pick a couple.
So do we want to expand our, our top list before? Just whatever a couple of people say? Want to pick a poll here, Carol?
Sure.
I'm in favor.
Yes, Dennis is nodding.
I think that's, that's a reasonable approach.
That's the majority. So let's do that, we've got them both in there. So what would be helpful?
What would be helpful? I'm, I'm watching time. I would like to get to the memo a little bit and see if we're hitting the right places, but there's, I wouldn't also mind you taking five minutes, and you now have your four, why you like them. As many, just rattle off why you like the four that are in the top so that we can write them down, and then when we write the memo, well, it'll give us fodder for filling in that part of the memo.
I think the ones that we've picked basically help to encompass lots of creative flexibility that the city can actually offer to the market-driven builders, and to help to, to develop the vision for our city.
Okay. Let's get, like, a little snippet if anybody wants to come in. Go ahead, Scott.
Well, the, the one on the, making more affordable housing benefits the senior population is, and it's a market-driven, and the ADUs is, I think that's going to be the trend. You, you, you might have a, a little cottage next to the, you know, the main house, and that's where the person lives for free, and then they take care of the, the, the old folks in the, in the main house, or vice versa, or whatever. So I think we're addressing this senior issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the ADUs because it addresses the, you know, 75% of the housing stock that's already single family home, and I think that's important. And I also like the preserving existing affordable housing because it is already out there, and if there are ways we can maintain that, that seems to be useful. I think that's in, in some ways easier than, you know, trying to develop a lot of new, new housing, so. And you've already made good arguments for A one B and A three A, so.
You've got our, yeah, I'm not going to repeat A three A unless you do.
Okay.
Not the efficiency, but I was short, okay?
Okay.
I will say on ADUs, it not only helps the tenant, it helps the homeowner. In other words, people can't afford to buy a house if they can rent out of that basement apartment.
Exactly.
Couldn't otherwise afford. I know that the basement dweller get less, get more housing stock and choose their own personal dwellers.
I afforded my first house because of the ADU. I afforded my first house because of the ADU and it, it was a legal, right? Yep.
Any else?
No, I haven't. All the comments made.
Okay. I take that.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. So, yes, the memo.
Yes.
Are, are we in the right, does this feel like the right ballpark in, in terms of the materials, what we did put in here so far? If I can.
Comment?
My concern with the memo was, there's not much context.
Okay.
Huge public issue and this gets very into the details. I'll also say, as an aside, we've got the categories here, but you don't mention market efficiency. I'd really like to add that.
And that's on page, on page two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bottom one, top of two.
Yep.
So please add market efficiency, but the other is, can we, and I could, you know, as, as, during the presentation, this is something we've all had an agree on it before, so that's not, as you know, with wireless communications, we like to brainstorm about how, I'm going to speak at the council presentation, how others are going to share in that when we make our group presentation. And maybe it's up to us to give context, but I'd like to get into, why is housing less affordable now? We all kind of know why, but I think it's fair to, let's start with that. It's really explosion in job growth, which increases the desirability of living here, which increases the land value. So the land near the jobs gets most expensive and we're feeling some of the effects of that in itself. So, but I got to say, too, you know, we're not like every other city in this area, we're not like every other city in our, as we, as we noted with the data at the outset of this. There's what, 14 arch cities? We are easily the cheapest one. We are 38% below our median housing price, the arch average, and we are 15% below the next closest city on the arch list. So I'd like to put it in the context of, yes, we should try and contribute to this, but we're already affordable, relatively affordable market. So you have to consider that when you expand city resources and change city policy. How far do you go in light of the role we're already playing in the housing market? I think we would need agreement on that. That happens to be my opinion, I brought it up for four, but I, I do think that kind of context is helpful. And we talked about early in this process, what are some of the economic. Are we trying to attract building of new housing? Because we've got an imbalance between supply and demand. The more, the problem is there's lack of supply. What policies are we proposing to help improve that, to help increase supply? And there's, I know other things, I'm just kind of, you know, tossing out things we've mentioned in the early part of this process, but I think it's helpful to have that context when you're making these more specific policy decisions, because it's sort of like having a comprehensive plan. We know what our big goals are, this doesn't say it. So I think we need to say it either in the memo or we as a commission agree on how we present it. In addition to the memo.
I would like to say that the memo should have a better opener.
Okay.
So that there is context, because that goes deep into the matrix and doesn't even really explain that heavily, but, but your general statements, and I think one of the statements you made in, in one of the very first meetings that we talked about was, the way you solve affordability is you allow there to be more building. Well, that's exactly what Seattle is doing, even to the point where, I mean, in the last three weeks, they have done some huge changes in different areas of the city, zoning them differently to accommodate growth so that builders can build. Well, we're a little further out, but we need to be involved in that process, too, as a city, which I think we're trying to be. But being able to articulate that in this memo to the council, just reminding them, hey, you gave us this assignment and this is what we thought through, but we're handing it back to you and, and please remember the context. We don't have to instruct them, but I think having a general statement about the fact that we are partnering with the region to create, you know, affordability, but as a city, we want to do that with the vision of our city in mind, but affordability, you know, okay, I'm not going to say anymore, but I like, I would like there to be some context in the opening part of that memo.
Okay. Mark, did you want?
Yeah, I, I agree with Doug and Carol on the context, I think that's really important. I just had a couple, maybe more specific questions. We're calling it a housing strategy plan when it's really about affordable housing. Is that because, is there a reason for that? Is there a reason we're not specifically calling it affordable housing strategy plan? Because I thought that was really our whole purpose, not developing, you know, an overarching housing strategy, but targeted at affordability.
Yes, that was the direction.
That was sort of direction from council to emphasize that, as I recall. Right, Debbie?
That's correct.
To emphasize, just call it housing strategy.
Oh, oh, so should we change the title?
Well, that was just my question.
Yeah, that's fair, right.
Because we're addressing affordability, not really all, you know, a lot of other elements of the housing strategy.
So these are, right. So we should, in the context, emphasize that as well.
Well, that was my thought.
Yeah, okay, good point. That's appropriate.
And just one specific thing here, I'm down at the, in, it's at the bottom of the criteria for evaluating and prioritizing strategy, it says, Commission saw to prioritize strategies that promise to be most cost-effective and I, I'm not sure that cost-effective was, was really the, the best phrase in, in summarizing, you know, our, our prioritize. I mean, we didn't really get a lot into the cost of these various, various strategies. So I was wondering why the word cost-effective was put in there when maybe we mean most effective or, I'm sort of wordsmithing on the fly, but I didn't think cost-effective.
Well, there was a lot of discussion, especially earlier on, about efficiency.
Right. I, I, when I think of cost, yeah, I think, I think that's a fair point, but I don't think cost-effective, maybe it's just the word itself, I think of it, you know, what are you spending and what are you getting? And we didn't really address that in, in any depth in, in, in the strategies we're highlighting them.
Okay. So do you like us to look at that particular way we phrase that?
Yeah, that was just a phrasing, a phrasing issue and that, that's all.
Okay.
Do you propose alternative language? Because that's certainly part of what I, how I looked at it.
Yeah, I, okay, market efficiency, effective, I, I'm sorry, I haven't spent enough time wordsmithing that particular word, I just thought cost-effective didn't quite capture what, as a summary, you know, phrased.
So we heard Mike said efficiency.
Market efficiency.
Because there's, and efficiency plays out a couple of different ways. We've heard Commissioner Nugent keep saying market efficiencies, which is part of it, but there could be, you know, ADUs, I guess you could argue as market efficiencies, but preservation, we heard the comment that it's already here, it might be more cost-effective than trying to produce it all over again. I mean, so I, we've heard words, different ideas that we've heard tonight all come around the idea of efficiency.
Okay, well, maybe it's efficient then instead of cost-effective, perhaps.
Is that a better word to work around here?
Well, it is for me.
Okay.
I want to speak further, but I, I do think there's, there is broader, well, you guys speak yourself, but that was a big factor.
I think, I don't think we have, I mean, it feels like that word probably applies to more of the comments than the word cost-effective does.
I agree with Mark.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Anybody else? Mike Paul here?
No, that sounds good.
Can't believe you're awake, Mike.
Almost breakfast time. So, so that sounds like what I'm hearing on this document is we need to fill in the shaded, take a stab at the shaded. You've given us some food ideas and stuff there. We want to add, there needs to be much more in the beginning, that gives, the word that I heard was context.
Yeah, market forces.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I think, well, I heard more than just, I heard market forces, but I heard some other terminology, too.
Right.
So we'll put, so, and, and I, I think that's a good idea, I, I think we were just trying to get something out to react to, so adding a whole section there. And then in other, there's some other, look through this carefully for some others, but that's the main changes at this point for this cover memo is to add in the shaded part. And, and in fact, I do want to make one quick comment, because two of these did end up on your, on your, the two highest-ranked ones aren't purely just regulatory notions necessarily. So for example, accessory dwelling units, it might, maybe it's regulatory, but it may also be making it more known in the community. There could be other ways to increase ADU usage than just regulatory. Same with preservation. So the two that you picked as your highest are ones that aren't necessarily specifically limited to looking at regulatory solutions to make them, to, to make them effective. And I, I'd like to put that in the memo to clarify that, because they do show up in the regulatory approaches is where they're identified, but they really do have potential other ways to help make them work better.
I'm not sure I follow. I don't want to prolong.
Okay. Well, we can talk about it at the next meeting if you'd like.
Good idea.
All right. Anybody else? More further comments? Debbie, do we have any more to take up?
No, that's it. You got through what you needed to get through and we'll be bringing back a revised draft memo next week with the revised matrix in place.
All right. Is there, I have to say this before I adjourn, is there any new business? Commissioner Mulcair?
He's not good, thank you.
Sorry?
He said he was good.
All right. All right, there being no new business, I hereby adjourn the meeting. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.